Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Joint Authority and Canal's Board. I'm John Colmell, Board Chair, and as usual, I'm incredibly pleased to be joined by most of my fellow trustees, Judge McAndry, Dennis Traynor, Tony Pacente, Michael Belboni, and Tracy McKibben. B. Gonzalez is excused and was unable to join us today. Also with us is Justin Driscoll, our recently appointed President and CEO, and we'll come back to that in a second, as well as other members of the team and audience with us. It's always a pleasure to have you all here. As noted, the meeting was duly noticed, as required by open meetings all, and I'm pleased to call this meeting to order. The agenda that was presented to us, we're going to juggle a couple of things around to have a little bit more of our celebration recognition events up front and pull forward the consent agenda, but with those accommodations, I'd ask for motion to approve the agenda as presented. Have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We've all had the opportunity, as we typically do, to review contractors and the like, ensure there's been no conflicts, or if they are, they're duly noticed to Karen and team. I assume and hope there's no other changes or updates to any of that. Terrific. All right. This is a day we've been long excited about and looking forward to. As everyone is aware, Gil Caniones moved on last October, November. So for the last nine months, Justin Driscoll has been steering the NIPA ship with the leadership benefit of tremendous support from the leadership team in an interim capacity, and during that time, we as a board have been coordinating a national search process and working with the Governor's Office and her team to identify the right next CEO for NIPA. Hence, we are incredibly pleased and proud and excited to have her announce last week that Justin Driscoll has been appointed as the next President and CEO of the Power Authority and Canal's authority. So we're... Well... Justin's long distinguished himself during his eight-plus-year tenure with us, hence the confidence we had in him to help us navigate this interim period of time. But frankly, he's stepped up and stood even taller progressively over the last nine months and further solidified that he's not only the right candidate, but the best candidate to take us forward and move NIPA to that next level and ensure we execute well on the Governor's vision and the high expectations all of us have for us as a collective organization. We're thrilled with the progress we've made during this interim period of time, and as I said, we're all the more excited about what the future holds. So Justin, again, congratulations. We're proud of you. We're excited for the future and look forward to enabling and sharing in the success that you and the team will provide in the years to come.
Well, thank you very much, Chairman. Let me start by thanking Governor Hokel for recommending my appointment to you, this board, and the confidence that she's shown in me to lead the Power Authority at this critical time. We're such an important agency, and so I'm thrilled and honored to be recommended to you as the next leader of the Power Authority. Thank you, Board of Trustees, for your support over the last nine months and during my eight-year tenure as General Counsel. I look forward to working with you in the future to continue the progress we've made. Thank you to my colleagues on the Executive Management Committee and all NIPA employees for the support over the last nine months, and look forward to leading all of you in the future. So thank you again, and I'm really thrilled and honored to be the next leader of the Power Authority, subject to Senate confirmation.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, I just have to say the following: Transitions are always hard because of the uncertainty, but this gentleman was not picked merely because he was there in place. It was an exhaustive search, including over 200 different candidates that you led, and frankly, the leadership that you demonstrated during this period of transition evidenced your seriousness about the mission of this authority and the need to get the absolute best person selected. So Justin has been recommended by the Governor based upon all the different searches that you led, and it was a great sign of leadership, and now we have additional leadership. It's been a great process. It was great to see.
You know, I would like to also congratulate the Board of Trustees and the Executive Committee for the succession planning that's been done that results in Justin getting appointed to this job. It proves that succession planning works, and you're the result of it, so.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you.
Yeah, I can only echo that. Justin and I have chatted, I think his appointment speaks volumes about the depth and breadth of the talent that we have in the organization, and hopefully it's all the more motivation for the rest of the organization to continue to elevate their level of play and perform well and know that and be assured that we're here to invest in them and enable the collective success of the organization and the individual success of our leadership team as well. So appreciate the kind remarks and certainly endorse that. The next step is for us as a board to approve and recommend or approve that appointment. As Justin just said, it's ultimately subject to confirmation by the Senate when they reconvene later this year, early next. But with that, I'm very, very proud to offer a resolution that pursuant to Section 1004 of the Public Authorities Law and Article 4 of the Authorities and the Canal Corporation Bylaws, Justin E. Driscoll is hereby appointed to serve as President and Chief Executive Officer of the New York Power Authority and the Canal Corporation, subject to confirmation by the New York State Senate. So I put that motion on the table and asked for a second. Second, a collective second, I think, is there? All in favor?
Aye.
No ask for any opposed. Again, Justin, congratulations. And one final thank you for your tremendous leadership throughout the transition. As Michael said, it's never easy, but you did a wonderful job and further displayed to all of us, and obviously the Governor, her team included, that you're ready to take on this challenge in a more certain way. So thank you for that, and we're all the more excited for the future, so.
Thanks.
On the flip side, we're... This is the final time that we'll all have the benefit of the judge's presence around our board table. We've all enjoyed that during our respective tenures, since his service has outlived all of our time here. Someone as you... This stage of life, that in and of itself is a notable accomplishment, but far more relevant is what the judge has brought to this board, to this organization, to all of us individually, the lives he's touched and all he's done to make us better individually and, more importantly, collectively. So when he gave us notice that he was pondering stepping down and stepping away, we did our best to keep him on the line a little bit longer, but earlier this month, he advised me and us that it was time for him and Lois and the family to move forward. It's certainly a difficult time for us to let go, but nonetheless, one where we respect and appreciate his service and the decision and the opportunity to enjoy life without NIPA. We've spent some time last night as a group acknowledging and recognizing his many contributions, but we do want to spend a little bit of time today on the record to enable all of us to offer our thoughts and ideas. The judge is one of one, and I think all of us certainly agree with that. He sets the pace, sets the tone. He's been the example for all of us to emulate in terms of doing it right, doing it well, and making a real impact. Why are we here? Why are we here? Why we're public servants and the opportunity that we have to make a real difference. So Judge, big shoes to fill that I want him, we won't even try to fill because they're just too big. Your contributions have been too significant for us to capture perfectly, but know that the value and the contributions will... We're forever grateful, and we're so much better for your time with us, and for that, we can't thank you enough.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
We have... Before I open up the floor, we have a little video that has been prepared as a tribute to the judge and his time and service here, so hopefully Ken, if you guys are ready to rock with that.
Well, clean, renewable, and reliable has kind of become the mantra of the Power Authority. It's kind of a motto, and you know, hydropower is clean, it's renewable, and it's reliable.
On behalf of the Executive Management Committee, I want to express our gratitude for all that you have contributed as a revered member of our Board of Trustees. Through the many exchanges with management over the years, you helped us shape and refine our policies and programs. Generations of New Yorkers will enjoy the countless benefits of your wisdom for decades to come. I have witnessed your commitment firsthand over the last eight years, and I know in your six years of service prior to my arrival that you placed the interests of NIPA and your role as its fiduciary and steward front and center. This is an evidence in every one of your comments and decisions, and it is why you are viewed as a legendary leader in the North Country, one of New York's most well-respected judges, and a unifying voice for reason. When the next chapter of NIPA and Canals is written, your story will be told with praise, applause, and awe, because it will be abundantly apparent the magnitude of all we have achieved as a result of your insight and guidance. So again, on behalf of my colleagues on the Executive Management Committee and all of NIPA and Canals, we want to thank you for your dedication to our organizations. We respect you, and we will miss you. Good luck, Judge, in all that you set out to do in this next chapter.
Judge, like everyone, I'm very sorry to see you retiring from the NIPA Board of Trustees. Your leadership over the past several years has had a tremendous impact on all that has been accomplished by NIPA. Your legacy will endure forever. On a personal note, I am very grateful for the friendship established from the very first meeting I had with the board and with you. That friendship, again, I will treasure, and I am grateful for your advice and counsel over the past several years. After a stellar career in public service, your retirement is well-deserved. I wish you and your wife and family the very best, and God bless you.
Judge, it's been a tremendous honor to sit at and around the board table with you for the last dozen years. Been an incredible role model, not only for me, but for every trustee who's had the opportunity and pleasure to serve with you during your 14-year tenure. The commitment you continue to display, not only for NIPA, but for all of New York State, is exemplary, and the passion you show for every constituent we serve, in particular those in the North Country, is best in class. As a result, you're leaving us so much better than you found us 14 short years ago, and for that, all of us are incredibly grateful. My best wishes to you and your entire family for continuing joy and happiness. Enjoy the years ahead, and know that you will forever be fondly remembered by all of us and everyone at NIPA.
Judge, it's been an honor and a privilege for me to serve on the board with you. Your leadership and guidance has helped me as a trustee, so thank you for everything. I was sad for myself on the board to hear that you were retiring, but happy for you. You deserve the best. Enjoy.
Judge, you will be missed. Your leadership is one that I think is invaluable, that I've paid close attention to as I've served with you on the Board of Trustees. That leadership and the importance of leadership and the importance of service is one thing that I've taken from you as I've served with you. You've also driven that throughout the organization to make sure that NIPA and Canal looked at the services they were providing throughout the state that they cared about, the role they were playing as a leader in the state. They also cared about the community in which they were operating and serving, and that's because of you. That's been a focus of yours, and I've appreciated serving on the Board of Trustees with you with that kind of focus. You will truly, truly be missed. In addition, I could not not take advantage of this opportunity to say that Needles will also be missed. I wish the best to Needles. Seriously, we'll miss you, Judge. Take care.
Dear Jane, where did the 14 years go? I am so proud of you for your dedication to the North Country and New York State when very important decisions were being made regarding all of us. I must say, though, I will miss your trips to Tiffany's. It was special at Christmas and birthday time. Love you.
Hey, Dad. No doubt you have made an incredible contribution to the organization and made a big impact on the people that you've worked with. I'm sure your leadership has been appreciated like it has every other place you've ever been. We're so proud of you, and we're looking forward to celebrating in Messina in a couple weeks. Love you. Bye.
Hi, Dad. Congratulations on 14 years with the Power Authority and your retirement. It's great that you were able to find a position to allow you to continue your legacy of public service for the North Country. The North Country needs a voice, and you provided a great one for a long time. I guess the question is, how much golf can one man play? Look forward to seeing you in August, and maybe we'll raise a glass of champagne or bourbon and celebrate the occasion. Love you.
Hey, Dad. Congratulations on a really successful 14-year tenure on the New York Power Authority Board of Trustees. Can't tell you how proud we all are of you for your impact, not only for the North Country, but for the state of New York. For Ally, Olivia, and Isabel, wishing you all the best in your second retirement. I'd like to say you can play some more golf now, but, well, we already know you're playing a fair amount as it is, so happy retirement.
Having a facility like this named after me, I do it in a representative way in that I'm a representative of the Friends of the Nature Center and the employees of the New York Power Authority, because that's what really makes it happen. So I thank you.
Before we give you a chance to respond, I'm pleased that the Governor has also recognized your service, so let me take to have the honor of reading her kind words to you as well. Dear Judge McAndry, I want to express my thanks for your 14 years of dedicated service and contributions to the New York Power Authority and New York State Canal Corporation Board of Trustees, especially throughout your time of leadership as Vice Chair. Your distinguished tenure reflects your respect for NIPA's historic mission and vast knowledge of our state's power system and changing technologies. With a strong sense of environmental conscientiousness, you have served a critical role in directing New York's decarbonization efforts and shaping its strategy for combating climate change. We are grateful for your advocacy of NIPA's efforts to connect communities across our state to clean energy and other sources of renewable energy in order to transition New York away from fossil fuels to a more resilient and reliable grid. As one of this region's most admired leaders, you have worked tirelessly to ensure a bright future for the North Country, its natural resources, and environmental stewardship. Thanks to your committed efforts, the state-of-the-art Eugene L. McAndry Nature Center at Robert Moses State Park in Messina has become a popular destination for residents and tourists and proudly bears your name. In realizing one of the board's most important goals, you led the integration of the New York State Corporation into... Excuse me, New York State Canal Corporation into NIPA's operations. At the same time, you helped launch the Reimagine the Canals program to promote tourism, recreation, and environmental protection along the canal system. I extend my congratulations for all that you achieved and offer my best wishes to you and your family for happiness in the many years ahead. Sincerely, Kathy Hokel, Governor. Everyone around the table, you've heard it, but I want to, on the record, give everyone a chance to offer a little bit... Obviously, an emotional time for all of us, you included. Wonderful to see your family included in that. It speaks volumes for, you know, what we all think of you, but one last little go around the table here, and then the floor will be yours.
Do I get a rebuttal?
Yeah, you will.
Well, you don't. I said it in the video. You have been a role model for me in how to serve the state as a Board of Trustees and for the New York Power Authority and the Canal Corporation. As I said, big shoes to fill. It's impossible to do because of what you've represented and your focus and commitment to the North Country and the important role that that played in the services that we provide at NIPA. That will not be left behind just because you're leaving the board. You've showed us the importance of that, and it demonstrates the work and how we can cooperate in our communities. And again, you've been a true role model, and I thank you for your service, not only here at the Power Authority, but throughout your entire career, and wish you the best.
Your North Country wisdom is something that we're really going to miss. It's a perspective that provides an incredibly important aspect of this authority. You know, the largest transmission in the world, I mean, in the country, comes through that area, and your ability to speak on behalf of your residents, the people you would care about, the communities you grew up in, that's so important to the way we do the things that matter to people. And, you know, one of the things I've always said to myself is, when I... Your piercing intellect, as you ask questions, sometimes reminds me, I am so happy I never had to appear before you as a judge, because, wow, I could prepare all day, and I wouldn't be prepared for you. So we're going to miss that sage, judicious analysis that you provide for all of us, but frankly, as the chairman said, it's a model for the rest of us.
Thank you very much.
Tony.
Like everyone said it in the video, your legacy will live on. And I've served, like Mike, with many, many judges over time, and it's always followed by their surname, but when you talk about the North Country, when you talk about this Power Authority, it's always just one name, the judge. And I think that really says a lot about the respect that you earned so tremendously by this organization, by the state, by your peers throughout New York State, not just the North Country, but throughout. And, you know, Tracy said it best, I think, role model. I really have enjoyed the time with you here, and as Dennis and I said, always, we're going to be a little lost, though, when you're not here to answer a question that we don't understand. So going to miss that, but certainly going to miss seeing you at these meetings and wish you and Lois and the entire family the very best and Godspeed.
Thank you. Judge, everybody has said it, and Tracy, I think, said it the best. You've been a role model. You've been a role model to me. Coming on this board, not knowing what to do and what to expect, I looked up to you, and, you know, I told you last night that I'm going to continue to call you because the chair in this put me in charge of the chairing and the audit committee, and there's no way that I can fill your shoes except to call you and make sure that I'm doing the same thing that you're doing and asking those questions that you asked. So good luck to you in retirement, to you and Lois, and we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
Justin, anything?
Yeah, no, let me just say, on behalf of my colleagues on the Executive Management Committee and everyone here at NIPA and Canals, and I think others have said it, but you certainly made management better. I think it was your judicial DNA. It reminded me of the days when you either had a hot bench or you didn't have a hot bench. You've been a hot bench, and so we had to be prepared for your questions. We knew you and the board, you know, would read everything, and we needed to be ready to answer your probing questions, so you kept us on our toes, you made us better as a management team, you made the authority better and state better, and we're going to miss you, particularly in the North Country, but hopefully you'll keep your ears open up there and let us know what you're hearing about how the Power Authority is doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Justin, if you could join me and all of my fellow trustees, join us. All of what we've just offered is at least somewhat captured in this resolution, as traditional as they are. Knowing that this one couldn't be more heartfelt and more genuine in terms of the emotional connection we feel with you, certainly. So again, congratulations and thank you for everything. Here, come on in here, front and center.
You guys need to tell us who we need to be looking at. Look at Karen now. Look at Karen.
Karen?
Karen here. Yes, right here. Cheese. They're looking at Cheyenne. I got a phone. Sheila?
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Judge. From the bench. Here, wherever it works best for you.
First of all, I want to thank you all very much. You're all very kind. I spent 20 years on the bench handling many difficult cases, and I don't recall a single time when I had to resort to a tissue to dab my eyes, but this is different. So, you know, you've set the board and the management team a set of vision 2030. You've got a lot of outstanding projects in the pipeline. I think what makes me proudest is, I think, I've been a part of positioning the authority to be ready to move forward, to achieve the 2030 goals, and that only comes about because of the dedication of the workforce at the Power Authority. The employees have a work culture that is second to none as far as I've been aware in my extensive life. You are outstanding. I told the Executive Committee last night, and using an athletic metaphor for what you do and who you are, that you are good. You've got game, and you can play. So going forward, you're well-positioned, Mr. Chairman, Tracy, Michael, Justin, Anthony, Dennis. It's been a pleasure working with you and the Executive Committee and all of the employees. You've honored me by your presence, and thank you.
Golf game got a lot of attention there. There could be some stress. I'm not sure about that, so. That's great to hear. It's great to hear. All right. As is clear, an emotional time, a difficult time. Transitions are never easy, but as we've all said, you've left us... Leave us in such a better place, so thank you one last time for incredible service. And on behalf of everyone in New York, we wish you the best in the many years ahead. So Lois, thanks for being with us and joining in the celebration today as well, so thanks so much. As has been referenced, there's big shoes to fill, so in that spirit, I'm going to bring forward the consent agenda, because included in the consent agenda is one the judge has served as Vice Chair, as the Governor referenced in her remarks, and the consent agenda includes... And the consent agenda includes nominating Tracy McKibben to serve going forward as vice chair. As Dennis already acknowledged, Judge was also the audit committee chair. So Dennis has agreed to step up and serve as audit committee chair. And B Gonzalez, who was unable to join us today, has agreed to serve as governance committee chair as Dennis assumes the audit committee responsibility. So I highlight those, but otherwise ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any objections, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very, very much. With that, we will move to the business of the day. And I think, Justin, you and I agree, there's no need for an executive session. So let's get about the good work that you and the team are doing. And the floor is yours to kick us off.
Great. Well, good morning again. Thank you, Chairman, members of the board of trustees, NIPA management, Canal Management, members of the public. Good morning. I wanted to just spend a few minutes talking about a couple of things that have been going on this summer in the dog days of summer, some of the progress we're making, give you a staff's report on a few projects, and then turn it over to Eve Noel, who's going to speak about our Vision 2030 strategic plan. So we'll start off up in the North Country, North Country being a big focus today with Judge McCandry. So we recently announced that our Smart Path project, which is a 78 mile upgrade of the transmission line between Messina and St. Lawrence County and Krogan in Lewis County, that we recently celebrated the completion of two thirds of that. In fact, the governor's, governor's office, the governor self issued a press release highlighting that. So to quote Judge McCandry, "The Smart Path project is a prime example of the important work taking place in the North Country that will strengthen our transmission system for the benefit of all New Yorkers. I commend all the workers who have kept this project on track through the challenges of the pandemic, and I'm extremely proud of NIPA's leadership for the development of this line and its continued stewardship of the state's transmission system." So thank you. Thank you for that, Judge. Continuing with NIPA's work in the North Country and also in the Southern tier, I wanted to highlight our Connect All Pilot, which is a really interesting and impactful project, the largest investment in New York's 21st century digital infrastructure. And that's officially launched with an event up in the Village of Sherburne, which just happens to be a municipal customer of the Power Authority. So in Sherburne, NIPA is working with Sherburne Electric, again, a Muni customer, to use NIPA's existing transmission system cable, basically our comms backbone fiber cable, to serve the role as being the middle mile in getting broadband to rural areas that surprisingly have very limited access to internet and broadband. And so we're assisting the village and the municipality and the design engineering and build out of the fiber network that would ultimately connect our comms backbone to 1,800 homes in that area. Super important project that we're really proud of. Highlighting another exciting project that we're working on spanning the state almost from east to west. The canal season is in full swing, and we're excited to highlight that in this new season, we're continuing the free on the canals excursions. It's in its third year now, better than ever, and includes kayaking, cycling, cruising, painting, birding, and accessible activities such as adaptive paddling and biking. And in 2020, we're anticipating almost 10,000 users participating. That's up from 4,000 last year and 2,800 in 2020 during the pandemic, when we came up with the idea to get people out on the canal. So we're very proud of that. Moving, moving south into the mid Hudson region, I wanted to highlight a local project here. It's a nine site, 6.8 megawatt community solar project right here in White Plains, where we're partnering with the city of White Plains and DSD Renewables. And this, this project will triple the amount of solar in Westchester and move us closer to our decarbonized New York. And we're very proud to be able to look out our window here in White Plains and see, see that solar, those solar projects. Interestingly, they're on top, some of them are on top of parking garages and are actually a canopy over the roof of the garage. So saves the White Plains sanitation department having to plow and salt that in the wintertime as well. So and providing solar. Exactly. Exactly. And then heading into New York City, we announced nearly $230 million in energy efficiency programs at CUNY campuses. These projects will span nearly 30 different project sites at 13 locations across New York City. And an example of just one of these projects is the CUNY Bronx Community College project in the university height section of the Bronx, where we're in the final phases of a utility improvement project that includes installation of new centralized chiller plants, approximately three miles of pipes and nine miles of conduit were installed throughout the campus for the project, which will generate $5 million in annual energy efficiency and maintenance savings. The $168 million project began in 2011 and will reduce greenhouse gas emissions by more than 5,600 metric tons, the equivalent of removing more than 1,200 cars from the road. And finally, I want to close by highlighting, touching on a program that's designed to really touch every corner of the state, and that's our NIPA Future Leaders Scholarship Awards. These $10,000 scholarships were given to 10 high school seniors interested in pursuing energy-related undergraduate studies to prepare and support a workforce that reflects the diverse communities that NIPA serves. And a few of our scholarship recipients are here today, and I can't wait for you to hear from them directly. So in conclusion, there's a lot going on here, a lot that we're working on this summer. We're proud of continuing to drive our agenda forward as we pursue the governor's clean energy goals. And we're proud of having a leading role in that. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Eve Noel for an update on the vision.
Eve, just one second.
Yes, of course.
Justin, if you could, I've seen a number of private sector announcements, whether they be solar arrays or other projects. Can you just talk a little bit about our collaboration or your sense of that private-public combination to really move the ball that much faster, that much better?
Yeah, I mean, you know, as you know, not only in this context of the distributed, more customer-based solutions, but also in some of the big transmission work that we're doing, we're looking to partner more with the private sector to leverage what NIPA can bring to the table, but more importantly, to try to, try to create additional private capital opportunities. And so we're doing it there. And the project that I highlighted here in White Plains with DSD Renewables is another good example of bringing in a strong private sector partner.
Just a big private sector solar project announced up in Genesee County and a couple others. So it's great to see those dollars coming to the table and those type of investment as well.
Yeah, and where we can play a role with some of our customers in bringing that, you know, kind of marrying the private sector with, with our unique customer base is where I think we really can play, you know, an important role.
Okay. Other questions for Justin before we pivot? All right, Eve, sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Who's got control?
Go.
One more. Good morning, trustees, scholars, and the NIPA team. I'm Eve Noel, SVP of Strategy, providing the 2022 six-month update on our progress in achieving Vision 2030. The EMC meets monthly with tactical leads to share insights, discuss progress, and maintain accountability. This update is a summary of our progress. My main message is that NIPA, as an organization, is fully committed to our mission and executing our plan diligently. We know it's the right plan for the people of the state of New York. Within previous trustee missions, the EMC shared several accomplishments. Justin just went through several of them. Today, you'll hear the initial results of our collective action. We know that we are going to 2030, but we're seeing progress along the way. Let's begin with a reminder, right? When the trustees approved Vision 2030, when the trustees approved Vision 2030, it was fully, it committed to our mission, executing our plan diligently. We need to go back one slide, please. Thank you. Here's the reminder. We have, we have five strategic priorities really around preserving the value of hydrogen, hydropower, decarbonizing our natural gas plants. And really, what that means is using our assets as a testbed for decarbonization. Third, developing the statewide transmission. Fourth, partnering with our customers to address their specific challenges. And fifth, advancing the needs of the communities along the canal infrastructure. Over the next few slides, we'll highlight the results of each of these areas. Next slide, please. Let's begin with hydropower. We met our hydropower generation target of over 11 terawatt hours. That's enough energy to power more than 1 million US homes for a full year. I would like to draw your attention to this bottom right photo. Within that, you see a crane hoisting bulletproof glass to our control room. The upgrade of the control room was part of our largest major hydropower program, the 1.1 billion next generation Niagara program, which will be upgrading critical elements of NIPA's hydropower assets. All, all the while, we were able to maintain our target of hitting our net operating income. Next slide, please. Next slide, we'll talk about the decarbonization goal, right? We achieved our GHG emissions intensity, and at the same time, we completed the NIPA Brentwood Facility green hydrogen pilot. Meeting the decarbonation goal is contingent on meeting the reliability needs of our grid. The use of green hydrogen is a frontrunner in filling the technology gap between our aspirations and our current deploy capability. NIPA provided one of the first efforts to demonstrate how green hydrogen can be used in power generation at the Brentwood Power Station. Next slide, please. For the state's transmission system, I'll revisit the project that Justin talked about with Smart Path. NIPA completed segment two, two thirds of the project. And in particular, let's look at this photo. Here's, here's the transition. We went from a wood H-frame pole to a steel monopole. While we're constructing that, we were also able to achieve our targets around maintaining, growing our asset base, 1.4 billion. We're maintaining our, our pipeline of projects and maintaining operational efficiency with keeping it intact with our O and M benchmarks. O and M over PPP, PPE benchmark. Next slide. For our customers, Sarah, in her CCO report, will highlight some of the, the largest municipal solar PV and energy source system. With this significant accomplishment, we must also note that year-on-year, solar costs have jumped by 14% according to Bloomberg New Energy Finance. Cost arises linked to increases in the cost of material, freight, fuel, and labor. Similarly, customers cited storage has faced inflationary pressure. Our team is working diligently to provide, to prioritize our customer contracts to ensure high-impact projects are not deferred by developers. Next. And then finally, with reimagine the canal. With the canals, we continue to see progress with our priority projects. As described in earlier presentations, we are, the reimagination of the canals is underway. As a simple example, the design of our priority project, Brockport Loop, has been completed, as you can see here in the rendering in this photo. Now, next slide, please. Lastly, let me conclude with where the team is going. Vision 2030 set our 2025 and 2030 targets and goals. Our planning process ensures that we continue to have the right plan in place. NIPA consistently monitors the energy market and takes a bottom-up and top-down approach to crafting the specific activities in which we will accomplish next year. As you can see, we'll come back to you with tweaks to the plans and changes to the KPIs. We have heard the concerns from the board, and we'll come back with a vetted approach ensuring that the board receives actionable insight they need to guide the organization. Thank you. I'll take any questions.
If you can bump that back, Carly, I think we're all living every day, the market dynamics, and they're very much in our face, et cetera. So editorialize a bit more in terms of the severity of the impact and what we can do to move smarter, faster, further in response or the reality check as to what's going to really get in our way. So it kind of re-levels us, if you would, as to expectations here.
Sure, makes sense. So the challenges that we see that we're facing every day, we know that specifically with around the supply chain disruption, inflation, like a clear example is solar projects. Like in, across the country, we're seeing sort of 12 to 18 month delay in all solar projects across the board. We're seeing, you know, year-on-year rise in solar costs, we said earlier, 14%, but some projects are even higher. Inflationary expectation numbers are like at an all-time high of the past 41 years. You take all that into consideration, our organization is diligently moving across and try and figuring out ways that we can address that, right? We, our 2025 and 2030 goals are in place, and we're doing all that we can to meet them. And when I say we're, we're addressing them specifically around the inflation, we had sort of the meeting earlier around with the board on sort of our approach to inflation. Do you want any specific details on it?
I mean, I'm just, there's only so much we can control. So I'm just trying to say, what can we mitigate, what we can't? What's the uncontrollables and the impacts? And at the same time, there's pressures to move even faster and advance our development that much quicker. So give us a little bit of your opinion as to how well we're going to be able to navigate those very real, you know, conflicting forces and expectations.
I think the, to answer the question about how well we'll be able to manage, I think the, the goal of the organization right now is hitting our 2025 and 2030 goals. What that means is that we'll be, we may be able to have to slow down some projects and prioritize other projects in order to hit our goals at the timeframe in which the market can actually respond to the needs of our organization.
And yeah, if I could, if I could just jump in just to add on to your question, because I think, as I was thinking about this too, because what you don't want is you don't want short-term, to take short-term interventions that displace your long-term goals, right? We've got very ambitious and important long-term goals. And I assume the team is able to be agile enough to respond to these, what we hope are short-term issues. And how are you adjusting? Are you working with, whether it's, you know, the CFO on how we look for financial innovative ways to help our customers as we, because our customers, our communities are built into these, all of these goals that we've set. So are you able to work well with the rest of the management team to keep us on track? Again, making sure that you're agile enough to respond to these short-term dynamics, but with an eye on achieving the long-term goals.
Yeah. Let me talk a little bit about how we, how we as an integrated EMC team works together, work together. Every month, we have a dashboard meeting in which we all share insights around sort of what we're seeing in the market and also to share accomplishments. In addition to those monthly meetings with all the EMC members, I routinely work with Adam as the CFO around understanding sort of what are the implications? And you see those updates in your, in your reports. On top of that, every quarter, we have a meeting with Justin, our Chief Transformation Officer, and Adam, where we review the results that happened in the EMC dashboard meeting on a monthly basis in order to ensure that we're on track and on target. And we, and Justin provides us feedback on like the direction in which we're going and places that we, that we can sort of pivot in order to accomplish tasks, the goals at hand.
And I guess that's what I mean, is less about how many meetings you're having, but that you feel confident, confident that you're able to, the team's able to adjust and to be, again, my word, agile enough to respond to these short-term issues and keep us on track and reaching our long-term goals.
Yeah, let me emphatically say that I'm confident in the team. I'm confident in the people that I sit around the table with and progressing against these goals.
And if I could add, I think we're, you know, we have in parallel a regular prioritization effort where we're looking at, it's part of the budget process, but it's also And if I could add, I think we're, you know, we have in parallel a regular prioritization effort where we're looking at, it's part of the budget process, but it's also part of the tie into our strategy and you know, are there short-term impacts that we should be taking into consideration as we prioritize what work we're going to do in 2022, 2023? Should things, certain things be accelerated? Should certain things be postponed? So it's really an ongoing process. We're all working together on it. And there are a couple of different work streams that I think address your question.
It is. It's prioritization.
And how we're being just nimble. I mean, because there's, obviously, we all know that the market dynamics were very different when the plan was developed and the timeline was put in place. And it's much more dramatic and much more impactful than we envisioned at the time. That's not a criticism. That's just the reality that we're all up against. So why don't we sure we're being appropriately nimble and repositioning? 2025 sounds like a long ways away and it's easy in 22 to talk about, yeah, we're on track for 25, but we all know that you just can't be where you expected to be, given those, you know, incredible
Exactly.
and the emerging market dynamics.
Can I ask a more specific question? You talked about the Brockport Loop. Can you just refresh us about, that's a bridge that goes to the campus at Brockport State.
Yes.
But what to do in relation, what's the goal, what's a hope to achieve in relation to the canals? What's the dynamic?
Sure. I mean, the Brockport Loop in particular connects communities, right? It changes the canals from an infrastructure, from an infrastructure sort of that directs water, but actually connecting, getting more people from the campus to the other side. And actually using the trails that are attached to it and seeing, you know, actually integrating sort of the canals as part of the broader campus.
Not just for the student.
The general public also.
It opens up access to the trail system that's on the other side of the canal, I think, is the ultimate goal.
I will, we look forward to the continuing dialogue as we talk all the time, process, support, strategy, risk management, those are, you know, top two priorities and considerations. So why don't we ensure we keep all this front and center and good running dialogue for us as a board around all these topics. Okay. Thanks. Appreciate it very much. All right, Joe Kessler's away. So Brad's pinch it today. Brad?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, trustees, members of the public, and NIPA colleagues. I'm Brad Van Aken, SVP of Operations Support Services and the Chief Engineer. And I'll be providing the COO report today on behalf of Joe Kessler. First, I want to start today by speaking about the St. Lawrence Waterball Replacement Project. This is a project that we're very proud of. The original water ball was actually built with the original project in the late 1950s and has reached the end of its usable life. The new world, the new water ball system provides potable water and fire protection for the entire power project, including the switchyard, the power dam, and other major power equipment. The new water tank will utilize a glass-lined steel structure to reduce maintenance requirements typically employed on traditional steel tanks. The project also includes the decommissioning of the original oil-fired boiler and the boiler house, which is currently used for ice prevention of the water supply. The new system also includes an upgraded water treatment system and new electric service for the water tower. The 120-foot concrete tower that you can see in the pictures was completed this past October 2021. The tower includes 30 poured-in-place concrete rings at four-foot heights. The total tower height with the tank will be approximately 155 feet tall. The tank's made up of approximately 145 glass-lined steel panels. The structure, it's currently under construction now, as shown in the pictures on the right. This tank and all supporting systems will be completed and operational by the end of September. Decommissioning, demolition, and disposal of the existing water ball and boiler house will all be completed by the end of this year. This project's an excellent example and demonstration of how our asset management system works, as well as our project delivery teams within Support Services are capable of managing and constructing much more than just our large capital generation transmission and infrastructure projects. Our project delivery team does this through a variety of delivery methods, and we have a high success rate with a lot of these public-facing projects. Next slide, please.
We've struggled to come up with a going-away gift for the judge. So I think we can move that one to his front or backyard, your choice. That'd be easier to give directions to the house, you know, just look for the water ball.
Right, the garden?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. I think we should consider that. All right, Brad, you get back to us on that?
Yes, it could be a potential pool, maybe. We'll work on that, Judge. We wanted a good news story for you. Switching gears a little bit, with the summer severe weather season upon us, NIPA and canals continue to take steps to enhance our resiliency and to ensure continuity of our operations. The 2021 Atlantic hurricane season was the third most active season ever. 2021 was the sixth consecutive above-average hurricane season and was the third costliest greater than $80 billion in damages. The forecast for 2022 is similar to last year's forecast. The majority of the severe weather in New York occurs primarily between May and September. NIPA and canals continue to fine-tune our preparedness efforts and focus on continuous improvement. For example, the practice of proactively lifting the canal's movable dams last year ahead of a large storm in anticipation of the poor weather helped to mitigate potential flooding along the canal. Storm response is a team effort. NIPA and Canal Operations Crisis Management, Corporate Communications, and Energy Resource Management conducted pre-severe weather season briefings and reviewed all of our plans and preparedness efforts. We also continue to work very closely with the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services, as well as all of our other utility partners within the state, to remain engaged and ready to support mutual aid requests if needed throughout the year. In short, just we wanted to give yourself, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the board the assurance that we're prepared and we're ready for anything that comes at us. That's it. Thank you for your time.
We're weathering the heat wave of the moment as well as one can.
It was pretty timely considering. No, sir. Everything worked well over the last week. A lot of the preparation we put in place is holding well for us. We do things like we take a close eye on our maintenance activities. We'll delay things, especially when we anticipate extreme weather like we've had over the last seven to 10 days. And just again, applying our preparedness and maintenance strategies and asset management, and so far, everything's going well.
Worst case, just punch a hole in that water ball and everybody run to the sale on, good up there. All right, great. Any other questions for Brad? All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Joe would have been proud. Well done. Sarah, next up.
Before I start, I just want to share the fact that I talked about how I don't like to wear white because I'm always concerned about getting it dirty. I bought this shirt in Italy a decade ago, and I've probably worn it three times. I made the comment to the Corporate Secretary's office as I came in. And when there was, the room was full of emotion and there wasn't a dry eye at the table. I went to reach for some water in order to gain my composure and I poured coffee all over my front. So Judge, I will miss you and I will forever remember this day because it will be the first and last time or the fourth and last time that I wear this shirt. Okay, so congratulations on your retirement. Yes, yes, yes.
You left your mark.
But no, again, you've been such a steady hand and our former CEO always said you're the conscience of the board, and I think that that was reflected in all the comments that were shared today. So it was lovely to meet you, Lois, and I'm sorry that you won't get any more Burberry scarves from the mall, but but you'll have to make him go down to Tiffany's on occasion. Okay, and I wanted to congratulate Justin too on his recommendation. Very happy to have supported him in the last several months and look forward to supporting his leadership going forward. So congratulations. And Madam Vice Chair too, and all of the movement around. So congratulations to all of you. Okay.
Thank you for your report, sir.
You're welcome. And with that note, well, I mean, it was
Need to maintain a lower profile.
So we talked about some of the headwinds and tailwinds in the recent report by Eve Noel, but in the end, the energy prices are up and that's a benefit to NIPA generally because gas is on the margin and that has an impact on the pricing that we get in the market for our hydros. So that's been quite positive generally for NIPA. But for our customers, obviously more challenging. And so we've been thinking about ways to mitigate those price increases. On the macroeconomics, we also touched on that. We are focused, as Eve said, on 2025 and 2030. It's going to be a challenge, particularly for the infrastructure investments that we have, whether it's chargers or solar storage. We've seen PPA prices increase year over year by 25%. We are working with SSM to identify ways to mitigate it, identify new delivery models, reduce scope, look at removing and having some of our customers that have union workforce do some work there, but it will be a challenge and we will continue to update you on how we're progressing. But we're aggressively trying to fill the pipeline so that we can get a reasonable hit rate. And then again, in terms of what we're doing for our customers, we recognize the pain that they are in relative to the price increases and recovering from COVID. We have waived the energy adjustment, which is typically an annual clause in their contracts, such that it will be stable from last year. We've also waived the compliance requirements for our recharge customers as well. So we are thinking of other creative ways to take advantage of the money that we're capturing in the margin in the market to share with our customers in the future. Next slide. Recognizing the increased power prices, you'll see the yellow is the target that we had last year and green is the current expected value of the accelerated our hedging in the outer years. And in fact, going into the prompt year, we are hitting our minimum required targets three months in advance. So again, trying to take advantage of the current market in order to provide greater financial visibility in the coming years for NIPA and all the funding that we have for the various projects across the state. Next slide. This is just this year. Again, you'll see 267 versus the expected 336. A big portion of that was captured in January and February when we had a colder-than-expected winter. And then as a result, the sustained energy prices continue to see us being above target by the end of the year. And again, going back to what we're doing for our customers, you'll see at the bottom there, the 255 megawatts. This is part of our EDCAP Economic Customer Development Assistance Program 2.0, where we provided temporary power allocations to existing customers for a three-year period in order for them to have the level of price certainty and budget certainty as they recover from COVID and frankly, now address the inflationary pressures that they're seeing and the labor pressures that they're seeing in their businesses. Next slide. Almost all green, Chairman, but one yellow, although you will see that on, this was as of June month end, and we are actually now at 46 chargers as of the first couple of weeks of July. So we are actually on target to deliver on all of our targets for the year. So strong, strong performance. Next slide. This is the third time you will have seen the White Plains solar projects, but it's a great project. Justin shared it as well as Eve. It was at nine different sites. The one picture that you saw that Justin put up was the, there was, there were panels on the roof as here highlighted, but then what you saw on the ground was actually utilizing an old landfill and taking advantage of municipal land that otherwise would not be used. It was a great day with Mayor Roach there, and you'll see the core, the core team, all female actually engineers that were and project managers that were working on it, both from the City of White Plains as well as from the Power Authority. We talked last time about the NYCHA Clean Heat For All, when you approved the procurement of the various mini heat pumps that will be installed in NYCHA. It's an exciting project. It's as a result of the scale in which we're procuring them, we're looking at driving down the technology costs as well as having a holistic approach to NYCHA in workforce development and supporting the implementation and installation of them in the future. NIPA, as we've shared, continues to drive economic development across the state and is looking at supporting emerging industries. The one example is the heat pumps, but also too, when it comes to air products, which is hydrogen and air and other chemical production facility. We are supporting specifically several projects that are looking at creating NIPA, or not NIPA, but New York State as a hub for the hydrogen industry going forward, complementing the Brentwood pilot that we had just a few a few months ago. And so it's really exciting. This particular allocation is supporting 90 jobs and that green hydrogen that will be produced can either power, I think, 1,400 buses or 900 long-haul vehicles. So it is significant in terms of the volumes that will be coming out of it. Next slide. I just have two events to share. I want to join NIPA back in 2018, almost my four-year anniversary. I introduced the Customer Clean Energy Exchange Event, the first truly focused customer event that was looking at supporting the education of our customers around our products and services, around trends in the energy sector, enabling them to learn from each other and their peers. We had a great event in May or since we last met. Didn't make the cutoff for the board materials last time, but we had excellent, excellent attendance and incredibly positive feedback. And I anticipate when we share our J.D. Powers customer satisfaction surveys in the future, we'll see that event reflected well in there. Next slide. And just wanted to thank Vice Chair McGibben for providing keynote remarks at the Women Empower Leadership Summit that we also held. It was actually held at the Edith Macy Center, which is a Girl Scout camp. We had a speaker from the Suffolk County Girl Scouts of America. She was incredibly moving and inspirational. She shared the fact, actually, we had a number of Girl Scouts in attendance from NIPA. They all stood up. They all said the Girl Scout pledge. And she shared an interesting, really interesting statistic that something like 70% of women-owned businesses and CEOs or executives had been Girl Scouts. So it is a very impactful program and is supporting the women of the future. It was a great event, and I think that in the end, you don't always remember the specific content of an event. You remember the feeling of it and the smells and just general vibe. And what I'll say is that my enduring memory will be of an incredibly positive energy of women laughing and smiling, particularly in the interactive activities that we did around emotional intelligence as well as around negotiation skills. So again, thank you to the EMC leadership, Justin, for supporting these types of events for our customers as well as for our employees. The commercial ops team continues to seek to drive innovation, be leading in the products and services that we're providing to New York State. And we'll look forward to sharing more progress in the future. So thank you too to the board for continuing us to drive us forward and reminding us not only of our core mission, but ensuring that we continue to aspire to greater things.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Any questions for Sarah? Great. Thanks very much, sir. Great reporting.
And Air Products is a northern New York project.
Yes, it is.
That's right. Yep.
Thank you.
All right, Adam, we got a good updated finance committee a couple of weeks ago. We'll hear more from Tracy later on that, but obviously, we're off to a strong start for the year. So give us a drive-by, please.
Sure. Good morning, trustees, members of NIPA staff, members of the public. Again, congratulations, Judge, on your retirement and appreciate also your leadership on the audit committee. And congratulations, trustee McGibbin, on your vice chairmanship. And of course, Justin, congratulations again.
Thank you.
Look forward to supporting you in your new permanent role, taking the interim off the title. As far as the numbers go, so when we met in finance committee, we presented to you five months of data for the actuals and the seven-month out forecast. This updates for the six months with the six-month forecast. And as you can see, we achieved $80 million in net income against our target of 38 million. So we're doing well ahead of that. As you heard earlier in the reports, higher energy prices, seeing better results out of our transmission lines, a lot of that from congestion pricing. HTTP line is doing better than budget, seeing some revenues from there as well. So all of that has been to the positive. On the negative side, I won't really say it's negative, but there's been increased expense in the monetized fund, which is where we capture some which is where we capture some of those additional revenues from the high prices. We put into the monetized funds and it goes back to various regions for economic development. So if certain prices achieve better than tariff rates, we deposit money in and it goes for those economic development areas. So we see that, we've broken that out. So we can show you both that as it looks today at $16 million versus the budget of seven. And then we'll, we'll put it in the forecast. And then other than that, the mark-to-market on our investment portfolio is negative 24 million through six months. I'll talk a little bit more about how we see that towards the end of the year. No other questions on that. We'll move to the full year forecast. Full year forecast, you know, we, we've been presenting things in a range. Our low case is 70 million, high case 118. The midpoint or the expected right now is 91 million. So it's doing, you know, continues to do better, but not quite at the pace. We saw for the first six months and the reason for that is, as also was mentioned earlier, we saw significant revenues at the beginning of the year, which tends to be where we make most of our money and we had a colder-than-expected winter. And so we saw outperformance for those earlier months and the latter half of this year, given the hedging activity, giving some softness, we're starting to see in some pricing in the markets. We don't expect it to be as robust as the, as the first half. So we're being a little more conservative there. And as I mentioned before, given all the headwinds we're seeing, so we do benefit from higher revenues on the, on the plus side. On the negative side, we see headwinds from inflationary pressures, the supply chain disruption, negative mark-to-market on our investment portfolio. So what we did was we took our investment portfolios by $1.2 billion and we, we shocked it by 200 basis points and a parallel shift of the curve and we arrived at a number. The Fed is poised to raise rates probably 75 basis points, but some say it could be as high as 100. And we're expecting as much as 175 to 200 by the end of the year. So we applied that to our portfolio to see what would the impact of that would be. And that would raise our expectation towards the end of the year for that mark-to-market to be, you know, higher than, than what we've been showing originally. Other expenses, higher interest costs from higher rates, we see that as also potential. And also our pension expense and potentially OPEB expense could be higher. Pension expenses based on the performance of the stock market through March 31st of this year. We'll have clarity about around that in September when we hear from State Controller's Office. And OPEB expense, we're being conservative there too, as we've seen the market affect that as well. And gains and losses there are phased in over, over five years. So we think it's a conservative forecast and, but we think we're very confident that we can achieve the numbers at the minimum that we presented here today. Any other questions regarding the forecast?
I think it's, you know, consistent with what we chatted about a couple of weeks ago at committee level. And obviously a very positive story, one fingers crossed that we navigate the remaining almost now five months of the year. So great story.
Great. And then also just to update on a couple of other items, not just the income statement, balance sheet remains strong. Liquidity is very high. Our days liquidity exceeds our metrics. We're going to get inflow of cash with the payoff of some of our energy efficiency loans from the state in the next few weeks. Close to $200 million there. That'll help with liquidity as well. But all our balance sheet metrics are really strong intact. We're working on publishing our 630 financials. You'll receive that in the next month or so. And that'll also be posted into the financial community. So you'll be receiving, you know, an update on those 630. They will be unaudited, but you will receive an update on those. And the other issue I also want to mention, last week, we had all the rating agencies in to do an update on our performance, not only from 21, but where we are to date. So all three of those, Fitch, S&amp;P, Moody's came in last week to White Plains office, first time they've been here. And since I've been here, usually we went to them. So we actually had them come here. They enjoyed it. We gave them a tour of the ISOC. They were very impressed. We had Eric Myers available to talk about our cyber security program, as you heard today, also very impressed. Also a lot of questions on ESG as I also presented at an investor conference last week. On the heels of that, also lots of questions about ESG. You'll hear from Kerry Jane later about our sustainability report. And I think we will also push that out to the rating agencies and to investors. And next year, we're going to try to integrate that with our annual report and our financial report. So all, all good things there. And, and then the last thing is just that, as we also mentioned about budget for next year, we've kicked that off and we've received submissions at the first start of that last week. So we'll be updating you as that process goes forward to update the financial plan. Any other questions?
Anything else for Adam? Great. Thanks very much. Appreciate it, Adam. Well done. All right, Phil, your plate is full to overflowing. Make us feel good about the world of transmission and beyond.
Great. Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, trustees, staff and guests. Thank you. I'm just here to give a brief update on the transmission and business development activities that the Power Authority right now. So again, this is a map of the state displaying our existing transmission assets as well as projects that are currently in construction or under development or various phases of permitting. So I'll start with a, an overview of Central East Energy Connect. This project is jointly being developed by the New York Power Authority and Ellis Power New York. Construction is underway now on segments three and four. And this includes the portion of the line that will ultimately be owned by the New York Power Authority. The project has experienced some delays in construction and activities at the Gibson Road Substation, which is an Ellis Power asset. But right now the project is still on track for completion by the end of the year 2023. Smart Path, this is again, is the third time we're discussing this. Justin mentioned it and Eve mentioned it. This is the rebuild of our existing Moses Adirondack Lines from the Messina, New York area to the Krogan, New York area. Construction is on track. The Moses Adirondack Two Line is scheduled to be completed in November. So the entire portion of that line will be rebuilt by then. The remaining segments are on track to be completed in 2023. And currently with about 80% spend on the project, we are on budget for that project. Smart Path Connect, again, a North Country project, that's the, the lines running along the, the northern border of New York and connecting with the Smart Path line. Construction on the, there's a Phase Two segment from Smart Path, which was permitted under the Smart Path Article Seven Project. Construction has started on that. The remaining portion of Smart Path Connect right now is we're awaiting the Article Seven Certificate from the New York State Public Service Commission. We are expecting that to be on the July meeting agenda, but there's been a slight delay. So we're expecting that in August. But with that, right now, the construction has been delayed in accordance with waiting for the Article Seven. But right now, the in-service date remains the same based on, on that short delay. And as we've seen in previous meetings and finance committee meetings, procurement activities are active on that project. So we're prepared to start construction once that Article Seven has been issued. Clean Path New York, that's the project we're working on with Forward Power. That's the 175-mile high voltage DC line from the Catskill region down into New York City. Right now, we're, we're supporting Forward Power and all of the engineering activities and Article Seven activities with that. They're expecting to file Article Seven later this year, September, October timeframe. We are supporting them in public outreach meetings along with open houses along the line's route, including the, the portion that's under the NIPA right-of-way. Engineering design, including activities and fieldwork and soil borings are being conducted and we're supporting them throughout all of those efforts in anticipation of, again, filing the Article Seven later this year. Propel New York, that is in the red sort of box down in the New York City, Long Island area. We are still actively engaged in that. The New York ISO is still in competitive process and evaluating all the projects. Six of our seven proposals are still in the mix in the running there out of a total of 16 projects being evaluated by the New York ISO. The team had met with the New York ISO earlier this month to present the projects as well as answer technical questions on the, the proposals and routing and such. So we remain active in that, supporting those activities as well as answering any questions that come out of that process. We are expecting the New York ISO to make announcements on that later this year, early 2023 on, on the award of, of that project. And those are the active projects. We're continually looking at other projects. We work closely with utility operations, not only on these projects, but also looking at studies to integrate additional renewables into New York and looking at opportunities down the road. And just to point out a few, few items that were, I guess, questions or issues. You know, the questions that Sarah raised about energy prices in the market, that just makes these projects all the more valuable because these projects will not only be unbundling renewables upstate, but also relieving congestion in the transmission system. So by, by default, you are helping to get lower-priced energy to the market, especially downstate. And you look at Clean Path New York, a great example of that. Smart Path, Smart Path Connect and Central East Energy Connect will unbundle renewable generation in the North Country. I mean, again, get that across the constrained interfaces towards the load centers down, downstate. So thank you. If there's any questions.
Just a quick question. If NIPA gets selected for the Propel New York,
Yes.
what would be then the timeline for completion of that project?
I, again, depending on when it's awarded and then going through the Article Seven process, our proposals, we're looking at around a 2028 timeframe. So these projects right now are really the basket and especially that one helping the Vision 2030. This, this, these projects are really, when you look at it, three, four, or five years of, you know, from inception through, through development and construction.
Thank you.
Anything else for Phil? As I said, appreciate your leadership here, Phil. It's, as you've mentioned, critically important, not only to our achievement of our Vision 2030, but just the impacts for all we serve across the state. So great work from you and the team. Appreciate it very much. All right. Next portion of our meeting, I want to spend a little bit of time focused on our efforts and initiatives to improve our diversity, equity and inclusion outcomes and impacts. So we've got a combination of Nancy, Eric and Lisa talking with us today. So. Right, Nancy, from the Forward Jurors, kick us off, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, everyone. I'm Nancy Harvey, the Chief Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Officer. And I'm happy to be here to give an update on the DEI foundational pillar. It has been a while since we've been here. So we are going to take a step back and look at accomplishments from 2021 through June 30th, Q2 2022, and then talk some more about what we expect to accomplish through year end. Before I start, I do want to congratulate Judge on his retirement. Thank you for your support. Past what, five years, I think? So Office of Civil Rights and Inclusion got stood up in 2017. It happened with the support of EMC and with your support. So I want to just congratulate you on your retirement and wish you happy golfing. Well, more golfing, right. And I do want to also congratulate Justin on his appointment. I look forward to working with you. We've partnered before and I'm excited on continuing to deliver or work towards a more inclusive NIPA canals with you. And of course, congratulations to all the trustees who continue to, to guide us. So with that, I want to welcome our special guests, acknowledge and management and colleagues for NIPA and members of the public. And today I want to talk about diversity, equity and inclusion and our commitments for NIPA and canals. It has been some 18 months since our December 9th, 2020 approval of our 10-point DEI plan. And since then, I'm pleased to report that we've been working really hard to move this project forward and bring our commitments to life. So with that, I will share, like I said, in 2021, we actually put together and organized our strategy around these four areas that you see here. And it's meant to increase representation. We're looking to build capabilities of our staff and our management around being inclusive and being more equitable and fair for employees. We also are looking to be more equitable and hold ourselves accountable for our commitments. And of course, the most important one there, I think, is building an inclusive culture so that our employees feel like they are valued, that they belong and that they can progress through NIPA in a fair and equitable manner. So in 2021, we actually started working on the foundation of our commitments to set it in motion because this is a journey and we're a part of Vision 2030 and we're working to achieve these goals, right? So with that, one of the things we did last year was introduce a DEI competency to the organization, which we thought would reinforce our DEI values and our commitment and would also hold ourselves accountable. So the DEI competency is introduced and actually this year by end of 2022, we're all going to be evaluated on how we're doing as managers and as individual contributors. Another thing that we did or that we continue to do is enterprise-wide training regarding unconscious bias and its impact on management of employees, of our business decisions and its potential to create implicit potential barriers to inclusion. So we've spoken before about mitigating bias in performance, mitigating bias in our decisions around management and in our decisions related to our employees. And so we continued to do that last year. One more thing we did was implemented targeted professional development and accelerator programs for traditionally underrepresented employees and managers. And we'll talk a little bit more and you'll hear from our pathways graduates. So we launched our inaugural Pathways Professional Development Program for our employees of color who were non-managers. We had 17 employees that started in October last year and we talked more about the fantastic graduation that occurred in May. We instituted developmental plans for diverse employees. Actually, Talent Development told me that all our employees across NIPA have developmental plans in place and that would help us better guide our employees and work together with management on identifying gaps and helping them to professional develop and get put in a better position for advancement to management and through the ranks at NIPA. One other thing, we, important thing that we did, we began tracking key performing indicators and publishing data to the organization, right? So we're trying, we're working to become more transparent and communicating across the organization what our representation looks like, how we're doing and progressing against our commitments and just sharing information so that people understand where we are, what we're doing. And we can, you know, talk about it and hold each other accountable. Another part of sharing was releasing information through our first DEI report, Better Together, the DEI Journey, that was released last year. And we put, we also released information in the first ESG report that went out last year. And so in talking to the organization more, having listening sessions and launching an engagement survey that had a DEI focus end of year, last year, we got feedback from the organization on how we were doing. I also want to talk about the ERGs. So our ERGs are very important. We have six. And with the leadership of EMC, they have executive sponsors, most of whom are sitting here today. Sarah just spoke about Women Empower. She leads that one. Our ERGs helped us to foster inclusion, especially as we continue to work in a hybrid situation. They hosted multiple virtual activities that kept our employees connected with each other, celebrating and acknowledging the diversity of our workforce. So that's 2021. Can you go to the next slide? So through the work undertaken in 2021, we continue to identify, assess and address individual and organizational barriers to growth, equity, inclusiveness and belonging across the organization. So this year was no So this year was no different. We continued to work with OCRI and with our partners across the different business units. We held, so we continue to hold ourselves accountable and we continue to work, to work towards building equity and transparency through the Career Pathing Program and the career growth and advancement through the Job Architecture Program. And Career Pathing Program that Talent Development has developed and launched. They actually started a pilot group for Career Pathing Framework. And I think this, this is really important so that all our employees eventually will understand what their jobs are. The job descriptions will be more consistent and folks will understand where the gaps are and how they can advance in their career. And managers will also understand and identify people who can be hired and developed to fill some of the roles that we have in a consistent manner across the organization. I hope I did that right, Stephen. Good. Okay, so we also launched Working Towards Inclusive Practices Series. So we call it W-Tips. It's a series that our office has put together. It goes out in our leadership talking points that we provide our managers with every week through corporate communications. And those tips provide our managers with tools and ideas of how to talk more to their employees and manage difficult conversations sometimes and help them to make critical decisions in an easier way so that it's biteable sizes that you can understand. And that's there. You just need to read it and follow the guidance when we have that in the weekly release to the, to the organization. We continue to foster learning and understanding and trust. And we address barriers to inclusion among our peers through three courageous conversations this year. So we know that there was the Roe v. Wade decision and there was the horrific shooting up in Buffalo. And so our office co-hosted some courageous conversations, three in fact, with Women in Power and with our multicultural ERG, and over 1,500 employees joined the conversation on the call. It was facilitated by an awesome moderator and we listened to each other, listened to the differences of what was going on and learned something more. I think that helped our organization to be able to engage and listen to differences and understand some other communities that you may not otherwise be familiar with. So we have 27 other ERG engagements, including the Women in Power Summit. It had over 100 women there and as, as Sarah said, a really energetic. People are very happy to be back in person and learning together and sharing. That really was a nice day. One thing I do want to point to is the Pathways Graduation. So we've continued to offer learning development and targeted accelerated management programs internally and externally. And internally is the Pathways Program. They graduated earlier, earlier this year in May. And those employees are more connected to the mentors who actually worked with them over the six months, senior staff and EMC members. And, sorry, and they are now better positioned to fill managerial positions and advance their careers. And so I have a clip so that we can hear from, more directly from the graduates on how their, what their experience was like and how they feel. Harley?
Growth, I jumped on it. I know that I don't know. When I heard that this program was being developed for career development and professional growth, I jumped on it. I know that I don't know everything that there is to know in the corporate world. So professional development and career growth is definitely, you know, some of the things that I aspire to grow in.
Gave me an opportunity to identify my strengths and furthermore, find ways to use those strengths in a way that I can be my most effective and fulfill itself.
And having a safe space that we could actually discuss race and gender and racism and sexism and being able to say, how can we make this better? What can we do? What are some different options? Because really, in the end, we all just want to learn more. And if leadership can learn more about what's going on, then they can do more and then we can just be better together.
So there you have it, straight out of the participants' mouth, the benefits that they got from participating in this program. And we're looking forward to, we're assessing right now and then we will relaunch end of this year. End of next year, sorry, because there's a mentorship program that's coming in place. So we want to have them, not have them in full flight concurrently. So this is what we intend to do and achieve year end 2022. We will continue to look to get tools that will help us to monitor our progress and provide better services to the organization. So you see a RFP for hiring technology for recruitment that's going to help us to analyze or recruitment efforts. Our DEI staff is going to continue to engage with the sites more directly to try and ensure that we are meeting their requirements and meeting their expectations. And we will continue to improve our ERG program and structure to deliver a more masterful product, if you will, for ERGs and the leaders and provide professional development to them. So with that, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to share this update today. Any questions?
No, I mean, I think clearly you've been busy over the last year and you've done some great work. And what will be interesting to see is, and I don't know if you map it with, and maybe Christine will know the answer to this as well. As you do all these mentoring and obviously employees want training, that's one of the things that I've heard recently. It's most important to them being trained. Are you tracking how they're able to move into positions within NIPA as opposed to train them and they leave to go find better positions? Are you tracking that as a, as one way to measure how you, how successful you are enrolling these kinds of programs?
That's the goal. You've spoken to HR, to Karina and her team about being able to track those participants and see how they're doing because definitely we want to see if they're being promoted, the retention, and just generally how they're doing.
I think that would be an important metric, yes.
Yeah, Tony.
Like I said, just curious on the increasing the representation pipeline on what, you know, what, I mean, what's the RFP? Or what are you, what are you looking at in particular on how, how to, you know, incorporate the DEI into our recruitment and increasing?
So right now we have created, oh, Stephen, want to pass it to Stephen? Sure.
Want to pass this even in terms of, you want to go to the mic? The RFP for recruitment and retention, increasing the pipeline. Your mic.
Just wanted to make sure you're paying attention.
Yeah, we, I will be talking briefly on this on some of my slides also. But we do have an RFP out right now that's, we're looking at two different tools that are going to have a real impact on the organization. I'm, I get excited about it. I can even go into my slides now. But we're looking at a career pathing development tool that's actually going to bring transparency across the enterprise to all employees about their development opportunities. And then in regards to hiring intelligence, where intelligence, we're looking to bring in recruiting tools that'll bring artificial intelligence into the selection process to remove biases from the process and also engage with candidates who apply and help them identify opportunities that they might, might not be seeing. And it will also be changing language within our job descriptions, which is also an outcome of some of the career pathing work we're doing. So we have a lot of exciting stuff going on here to really increase the pipeline of diverse candidates across the board.
Nancy,
yeah.
What, what's your sense of the, the size of our program here? Is it of a size to make a meaningful impact or are we just walking here before we can run?
So I've been considering scaling up the Pathways Program. However, what we're seeing is that the opportunities that we're offering kind of compete with each other. So while I would want to scale up and offer some more programs around, similar to the pathways, what we're finding is that if we walk first and just monitor how we're doing and how many people and if it's, and who are the people who are participating, then we think we'll be able to increase interest in getting people to volunteer to participate. And same thing with management because we're also working with our people leaders to get them more involved in helping their staff and team to develop further. We removed the barriers from access, right? So we're not relying on references from managers anymore. So we're actually pushing it out to the organization, talking to ERGs, talking to all our diverse employees about the developmental opportunities. So we'll see how that goes and then scale up from there.
I think with all of us, want to ensure we don't lose sight of the forest for the trees that while we're measuring programs and initiatives and all that, that we're in fact moving the needle bigger picture. Plus, we're raising the bar. So don't preach into the choir. But yeah, just want to ensure that while it's great to take credit for what we are accomplishing, bigger picture, are we achieving the overarching goal and are we a better organization? You know, are we more inclusive? Are we more engaged? All the rest of that. So ensure that the right KPIs and focus is there that we're having the intended impact on outcomes, not just better process and initiative, but in fact, that, you know, the real outcomes that we all expect. We don't aspire, we expected to accomplish are, are being achieved, so.
Definitely.
Okay. Anything else for Nancy? Great. Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, upbeat report. Thank you very much. All right, Eric, you're. There we are. There's Eric. Thank you. No, I saw you there. Okay, good.
Well, thank you, Nancy. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Trustees, newly appointed Mr. President and NIPA leadership and the members of the public. My name is Eric Alamin. I am the Senior Director of Supplier Relationship Management for the Authority and I oversee our supplier diversity for both the Authority as well as Canal's Corporation. I appreciate the opportunity to, to provide a, an update on supplier diversity tactic. As Sarah mentioned earlier, NIPA continues to work with our Strategic Supply Management Department to build strong supplier relationships to drive innovative solutions. As such, as part of Vision 2030, NIPA has committed to double its supplier diversity spend over the next five years. In 2021, we set the foundation for years to come to support this initiative. So first things first, a supplier diversity roadmap was completed in 2021, outlining 11 initiatives aimed at capacity building. We achieved our supplier diversity goals of 6% for MWBE and 22% for, the other way around, 22% of MWBE and 6% for SDOB, which is Service Disabled Veteran Home Businesses. For the fiscal year of 2020 and 2021, we hosted 12 supplier outreach events across the state to, to help educate suppliers on who we are and what we do. We launched our Supplier Mentorship Program, which included completion of program materials and commenced our pilot, which was the first phase of the program with three mentorship teams that were located across the state. One in Western New York, one in Central New York, and one in Southeast New York. We initiated a surety bond training program to help diverse firms secure bonding and access capital to increase business capacity to support the work that we're doing. And finally, understanding that there were, there were new businesses continuing to seek MWBE certifications, which you've probably heard for some time. The New York Power Authority, along with the MTA and DASNY, partnered with the state to, to enhance their certification process regionally across the state. Looking ahead, the goal continues to be increasing awareness locally as well as outside of New York State about the Power Authority and all the good work that we're planning on doing as part of Vision 2030. Develop business preparation programs to build capacity and competencies among the diverse businesses and create opportunities for diverse firms to compete, to compete for all the work that we're planning. Next slide. So in 2022, key achievements to date are as follows. We've reported to the state as part of fiscal year 2021 and 2022 over $95 million or an increase of 19% of, of spend from our base in direct and subcontracted spend in New York State with New York State MWBEs as well as service disabled home businesses. We've completed, like I mentioned earlier, we completed our Mentorship Program pilot. And therefore, at this huge milestone tomorrow, we're actually having, hosting an event here in White Plains to share lessons learned, best practices that we've achieved and officially move the program to the next phase of the program, seeking new applications to commence the first cohort. We've initiated the surety bonding of program, training program, which representation of over 50 diverse firms being educated on improving their finances to bid on larger opportunities. We began promoting and marketing these small and business programs throughout New York State and different communities. We also work, again, just kind of mentioning earlier, we work with the state to establish regional presence on the certification process, which is very, very important to ensure that we're accelerating the certifications among MWBEs or potential MWBEs. And finally, we hosted earlier this year, the, our inaugural Supplier Diversity Expo in January, where we had 20 educational sessions with over 200 attendees. Next slide.
Eric, so the 19% increase in $95 million, is that greater than the overall increase in spend? Is there a bigger slice of the pie that's now going to MWBE and entities? Or is that just the rising tide lifting all boats?
We're, we're rising. I mean, again, it is, it is greater absolutely to that point, but certainly on pace to meet our ambitious goals of doubling the spend over the next five years.
And take a bigger slice of our overall spend.
That is correct.
Okay.
Next slide. So looking ahead to the rest of the year, NIPA plans to continue increasing awareness through new educational and outreach events while participating in those hosted by agencies, authorities, and organizations like the New York Urban League and the Local Initiative Support Corporation. NIPA also plans to build capacity and competencies through the development of supplier diversity programs. This includes our Mentorship Program, which I mentioned earlier, our surety bonding, our small business and local business program. But I also, I'm kind of excited about another one that I wanted to share. We're also developing a diverse business community assistance program. Following, again, the unfortunate events that occurred earlier this year in Buffalo, we're, we are looking to first focus on East Side, East Side Buffalo. NIPA is in, already in communications with NAACP's Reverend Blue on strategies, including engaging the indoor food project. Buffalo Health Equity List, which I mentioned earlier, and the Empire State Development Corporation on these initiatives. So this will be something that we're looking to launch there first and then try to see if there may be other communities across the state that we can replicate this type of program. And then finally, to create opportunities, the team continues to track MWBE spending compared with the annual goals for NIPA and Canals. In terms of goals, we've also established working with HR as well on organizational mosaic training to educate and empower employees to be part of the supplier diversity growth. And finally, updating any policies and procedures that we may have in place to ensure that we're relieving any perceived barriers that may be in our contracting process. So this coincides with the commitment to grow the local economy, promote innovation, drive competition, and strengthen supplier relationships. At this time, I'll take a pause. If there are any questions, let me know.
I guess, if I could, just to pick up on the question by the chair, because all of these are, it's really great. And I know this is hard work it takes, you know, you've got to be at it. And this is just what you've accomplished since you launched this in 2021. And I guess, similar to the question that I asked Nancy, when I look at the $95 million spend, that seems like a lot of money, but we spend a lot of money. I mean, I'm going to give a financial report. One contract itself is $100 million. And so making sure that we're being ambitious enough about the goals that we're setting for what we can achieve. Because I can't tell you how many times we've had a conversation where we look at a contract where we're like, you know, we couldn't find, you know, whether it's an MBE or a veteran owned business. And so making sure that we're connecting the work that you're doing under these programs with real, you know, evaluation in the kinds of our contracts that we're giving out. And so, and I don't know how you coordinate that because we want to see real results. Having these programs are great, then people will come back and say, I participated in this program. We're still not moving the ball in any significant amount or, you know, ambitious amount, which I think I expect from NIPA because that's how we treat every other initiative that we take on, that we be as ambitious as possible. And so just making sure that there's that connection during the work you're doing and the kinds of contracts that we're giving out in NIPA. It's a long term work. I know it takes, you know, you've got to lay the groundwork first. And that seems like what you're doing with these programs, that making sure you're setting up and how you measure the success of these kinds of programs is ultimately feeding into that.
Thank you. And just to kind of build upon that, if you don't mind. Yes, our team is certainly looking at how do we marry a lot of the programs to drive opportunities for local businesses within New York State. And so a lot of those elements include, you know, making sure we're identifying the appropriate scopes of work. Are there available certified firms within New York State? As well as are they available within the regions within New York State? So that's also the aspect, but you're absolutely right, and we are tracking those components.
And as Alyssa, Eric, it's, I mean, so what isn't working? With the benefit of what you've now seen, the experience we've now had, where aren't we getting traction? What do we need to do differently? Where can we accelerate the growth? Because I think this is an incredibly important initiative in terms of the outreach. I mean, we're much more in control of what happens within our organization, our ability to influence and impact others, I think is vitally important. So what isn't working? Where have we shot missed? I don't mean that critically. It's just what, how do we pivot to, you know, you have even more of an impact as we look ahead?
I mean, I think in general, it's not necessarily what isn't working. It's just making sure we're spreading the message across the New York State. There's so many firms, new firms, that are establishing businesses across New York State. So how do we ensure that the local communities are aware of who we are and what we're doing? And making sure they're engaging the power authority to set them up, register, educate them about opportunities and try to marry the work that we're planning with the work that they can provide and support us. So it's really just outreach and education, not locally as well as, you know, across the country.
And just have to stay at it.
Absolutely.
No question about it. So, okay. Other questions for Eric? All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks very much.
At this time, I'll turn it over to Lisa.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Lisa Payne Wonsley. I'm the Vice President of Environmental Justice here at NIPA. Good morning. I always appreciate the opportunity to speak to the trustees about our EJ accomplishments, especially under DEI. In particular, though, I'd like to thank all the trustees for your support. But Judgment Nakandry, you have been exceptionally supportive and encouraging in my six years here. And you show up at our events and we really truly appreciate you and we will miss you. We've been able to meet or exceed all of our metrics for PTEC, the Environmental Justice Community Volunteer Corps, and the Future Energy Leader Scholarship Program. But in the interest of time, I'm going to concentrate today's presentation on our 2022 accomplishments, especially since I reported most of our 2021 accomplishments last year during our July trustee meeting. On next slide. So as for PTEC, we increased our PTEC partnerships from three to seven partner schools, adding schools in Staten Island, Brooklyn, Capital Region, and Niagara Falls. The number of PTEC paid internships were doubled to 28 students. The internships began on July 6th, and they'll conclude this year on August 11th. Prior to formally launching the 2022 PTEC program, EJ staff recruited and matched 28 NIPA mentors who will offer support and provide guidance to the PTEC students on a weekly basis throughout their six week internship. NIPA professionals at Albany, White Plains, Clark, Buffalo, and Zeltman have volunteered to work with students on energy and engineering team projects, concluding with a virtual presentation to all NIPA staff and management. And these projects really serve a business need for NIPA. In Western New York, the interns will conduct an energy audit of two local NIPA customers, Cermet Ceramics and Buffalo News Press. In Central New York, the interns will gather data and map the vegetation along our transmission lines. And students will ultimately make suggestions on new plants or plant removal if the vegetation poses a threat. And in the Capital Region, interns will identify locations within the city of Albany to install smart sensors on existing streetlights to measure air quality, noise, vibration, temperatures, and Wi-Fi availability. The students will have the opportunity to present their findings and their suggestions to the mayor's office of Albany, and they're very excited about that. In New York City, interns will work on a few projects. An energy audit of the Steinway Piano Factory, a cost benefit analysis to determine the most effective communication systems to use through NIPA's facilities, research and data gathering in a local neighborhood to analyze the feasibility of new community distributed generation projects. And they'll work on the development of an internal training for NIPA employees to learn about cybersecurity best practices. This year's PTEC interns are an amazing group of young people, and they're very eager to learn. We've had some other accomplishments in 2022 with PTEC, which include the establishment of a monthly career academy, which serves all seven schools. With this program, NIPA professionals meet monthly with students over the school year to share their personal experiences and assist them with developing work and life skills in a multitude of areas. And with the support of our IT groups, cyber, and HR teams, we completed the development of a skills map for use by Port Richmond High School and the College of Staten Island for their cybersecurity program. This exercise ensures that entry level requirements for jobs match and align with the current curriculum for the program. As for our EJ Community Volunteer Corps, to date, the Corps has sponsored five volunteer opportunities, four events in Sealy, Utica, Western New York, and one in Northern New York is scheduled for next month. By the end of 2022, we expect that approximately 100 employees will have participated in one of our days of service. We have worked with a vast array of community partners across the state. We introduced a new enhancement to the 2022 Community Corps Program by way of a company wide competition, asking employees to propose ideas for an Employee Choice EJ Community Corps event. So employees from around the state submitted ideas for a local project that we could implement through Community Corps. A working group will select the winner within the next month, and that project will be implemented by the end of next year. I'm sorry, by the end of this year. Next slide. Some of you may have joined us on June 13th, when Justin hosted a celebration of the Future Energy Leader Scholarship Class of 2022. 10 scholarships were awarded. Let me introduce them to you. We had Mian Zhao from Queens, who will attend City College in New York, Stefan Bezicon from Messina, who will attend SUNY Canton, Jalen Brooks Perkins from the Bronx, who will attend Wellesley College, Treasure Brown from the Bronx will attend Clark Atlanta University, Yousra Sani from Brooklyn will attend Pennsylvania State University, Jamie Sterling from Queens will attend Syracuse University, Faith Twague from Buffalo will attend University at Buffalo, Mapendo Tumanyi from Buffalo will attend SUNY Buffalo State College, Rashim Williams from Staten Island will attend Mary Baldwin University, and Mia Williams-Pain from the Bronx will attend University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign. In its second year, the Future Energy Leader Scholarship Program brought us a new class of students who are not only outstanding academically, but they are acutely aware of the direct impacts of climate change on their communities and their families. Students wrote eloquently in their essays of the need for innovative solutions to combat climate change, and each scholar spoke of their commitment to be part of the solution. Today, two of our scholarship students, Jalen Perkins-Brown and Mia Williams-Pain, no relation to me, have been kind enough to travel from my hometown of the Bronx to share their personal and academic journeys and how the NIPA scholarship is keeping, helping them keep their eyes on the prize. Jalen is planning to major in Business Administration and Political Science, and Mia will study Civil and Aerospace Engineering. Without further delay, I'd like to introduce you first to Jalen, and then after she speaks, Mia will speak.
God, I love that picture. First of all, good morning, everyone. My name is Jalen Brooks Perkins. I'm from the Bronx, New York. I recently graduated from West Town School, and I will be attending Wellesley College in the fall with a major in Political Science and Business Administration. So first, let me start by telling you that the Future Energy Leader Scholarship has done so much for me already. I mean, it has really helped me further develop my interest in environmental justice. I've always been an advocate for social justice, especially living through the COVID-19 pandemic, which I know took a toll on all of us. It really opened my eyes to understanding that tomorrow isn't promised to anyone. And so it's important to make a difference now. And so I couldn't help but feel so passionate about activism when I witnessed things like George Floyd during the pandemic. And my new passion for activism has really allowed me to get in touch with my environmental justice side, especially when wanting to become a lawyer at some point, especially also in my endeavors at Wellesley College as well. I find it to be immensely important for my generation, the youth, to be inspired by things going on in our communities. In the Bronx, New York, we have one of the highest rates of asthma, and that goes because of air pollution and issues concerning that. And I am personally affected by that. I live in the Bronx. I have asthma, and I never understood the connections of this, as many people don't. I really learned about how important it is to not only educate myself, but others in this scholarship will allow me to do so at Wellesley and in my journey in becoming a lawyer in diversity and inclusion. So I kid you not, I am trying so hard not to get emotional because I'm excited for the future. I thank you all so very, very much from the bottom of my heart for all that you have given me, not just the money, but the experience and the opportunity. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Good morning. Okay, my name is Mia Williams-Pain, also from the Bronx, New York. Yes, go Bronx. I recently graduated from Talent Limited Performing Arts High School. And as you know, I'm heading to the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign. So my entire high school journey has equipped me to step into this moment. And for the past several years, I advocated for education reform in the New York City DOE, learned about civics through the lens of criminal and environmental justice, and took part in crafting a youth agenda with several of my peers and our adult allies to pitch to crucial elected officials across the city. And so I want to share with you something that I was asked. I was asked the question, what makes me unique as an engineer? And I had these three aspects, innovation. I will tie space data with environmental protection efforts to reverse human enhanced greenhouse effects through groundbreaking innovations, all while supplying marginalized communities with humane living conditions on the convergence of politics and ecological engineering. Perspectives: I convey the lens of a Christian black Bronx native female who has sensed the thickness of air fumes from a vehicle's exhaust fumes and envisioned an asthma free neighborhood. I possess the same cries reflected across countless of underdeveloped nations. I've envisioned restoring hope to the millions and shortly billions of climate refugees that have been displaced due to political negligence by initiating eco-friendly built environments and eradicating induced climate effects. And my diversity. Unfolding the tragedy of Cheyenne Martin as an eight year old black girl, I became aware of how America views me. Watching the effects of red lighting play out in the Bronx, I became absorbed with the world of civics. And reciting Black History poems on stage, I became a vessel for illuminating the formidable voices, the formidable voices and spirits of my ancestors. And witnessing dramatic executions of August Wilson plays, I became acquainted with the power of theater. Following every experience, I became further versatile as an individual, helping me become an engineer who addresses challenges with the diverse outlooks I'm gifted. And why this matters is because it is impossible to be an engineer in any field, but particularly in engineering, and not branch out into other fields so that your objectives can become more efficient and you can make rightful discernment about the fundamental societal impacts. And so I want to thank you all for investing in my future. This $10,000 scholarship has been a huge blessing for me and for my family. I come from a single parent household, and so this has really just been mind blowing for my mother and I, and I'm really thankful.
I'm so proud of the Bronx today. Absolutely. I'm a Bronx girl. So thank you very much, Mia and Jalen. I mean, for their deeply thoughtful remarks. I think you will agree that these inspiring young women are beacons of hope for our future. Really, really, just amazing. And last note, what we plan to do this year, since we now have two classes of scholarship recipients, is to do more outreach and make sure that we keep in touch with them during the holidays and make sure we have events so that we can bring them all together. Just bringing Mia and Jalen together, who didn't know each other this morning, was just a treat. Also, I want to thank Jalen's parents for attending today. They're here as well. Congratulations to Mia's mom for raising such a wonderful young woman. The next slide. As a reminder, if you have a few moments after the meeting, please join the EJ team and other NIPA staff for our open house today for our new mobile classroom, the Energy Explorer. It is parked on the loading dock side of the building today until four o'clock. And I thank you for this opportunity to give you updates on our DEI initiatives. Are there any questions?
So I have one final question, but I don't know if it's to you. I did want to, the slide that has the outcomes, I mean, it's all green. Under tactic B, it's probably you, Eric. I'm not sure why that's green, considering, you know, we're more than halfway through the year. And, you know, if we looked at what our actuals are compared to our targets, we're not quite there. And I don't know if maybe we have a plan to be aggressively work toward those goals by the end of the year. Do you know which slide I'm talking about? It's the last one, the next one after this, where, you know, they're all green. Keep going.
Again.
The other one.
One, one, one more. That one. So you see where we have the actuals and the targets. We're way behind, and we're more than halfway through the year. And so I don't know if there's a plan to get us where we're actually. And so I don't know if there's a plan to get us where we're actually green by the end of the year, but that doesn't look green to me.
Yeah, 29 versus 90, 18 versus 145, doesn't look to be on track. That goes back to some of our earlier.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, what are the trends? What's the momentum?
Great point. I think it was, so in general, as it relates to this, based on the timing of when a lot of the work is being performed, we are on track to that end, to meet our objectives by year end. So it's really just a ratio in terms of timing versus now versus when, where we expect to be towards the end of the year.
Okay, great.
Welcome.
Just curious.
Yeah, we look forward to an update in those absolute numbers as the camps close. It goes back to our questions earlier. What's working, what's not working, how to create even more momentum, you know, better outreach and the like, so.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to comment on our yellow, actually. We had two students who joined the PTEC internship program, and one had to drop out because of transportation problems, which is something that we have to address later on when we're talking about low-income students. And one dropped out of the PTEC program completely, so there was not enough time to fill those two slots.
Well, 95%. I mean, you guys are a little harsh with the yellow there, Lisa. I think you deserve better than off-target.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Great report.
I hope you don't mind. We're gonna, we're gonna take the students on a tour of the ice hockey, so we're gonna.
Great, because we have to take a short break as well. So this is terrific, okay? So yeah, before we move forward, before we move forward with Stephen and Shirley in particular, need to call a little bit of a timeout here, a very short break. I need to step away. Tracy will step in and chair the meeting for the remainder of the agenda. So give us five minutes, and we'll be right back with you.
Great, thank you. Welcome back. We'll jump right back into our agenda, and I'll invite Stephen Kalashian, VP HR and Organizational Development, and Shirley Marine, VP Enterprise Shared Services, to give us the next report. You started it earlier. Now you can finish it.
Good morning, trustees. Judge Nakandji, I want to wish you the best of luck in retirement. I'm not big on golf, but if you want to go around on mini golf, I'm pretty good with the windmills. And Justin, congratulations on the president.
Thank you.
And trustee McKibben, congratulations on promoting. It looks like you got another one in real time, so. I'm Stephen Kalashian, Vice President of HR and Organizational Development. Next one, Carly. I'm going to be presenting today on Tactics A and B, and Shirley Marine will be presenting on Tactics C. Before I jump on the presentation, I thought Judge Nakandji said something that resonated well with me about the fact NIPA has game. And being in HR and responsible for supporting the people across the organization at NIPA and Canals, we take that with a big sense of pride. We see ourselves as part of a legacy that you've been a part of, and we want to make sure we have a big impact in supporting our employees. As we, you know, move forward towards Vision 2030 and beyond, we can't predict the future, but we can try to support the organization to respond to whatever the future has in store for us. Next slide. Wanted to provide a quick highlight of our 2021 accomplishments. At the core, resource alignment is really about building a resilient organization by retaining, attracting, engaging, and retaining a diversified, talented workforce. It's a, it's a journey, it's a continual journey that, you know, the work we've done over the past year that you see here really sets us up for the work we are doing today. So a few of the highlights we'd like to, you know, I wanted to point out is we've partnered closely with Office of Civil Rights and Inclusion for a lot of the efforts you heard Nancy Harvey talk about with her team. We launched a Pathways Mentorship Program. The other thing to note is DEI is embedded in all our talent initiatives now across the board. So everything we do, we bring DEI into it. A diverse workforce is a strong workforce, so that's our philosophy there. We also did a lot of work around culture, and we announced our values last year. So a lot of work we're doing now is around values and aligning the organization with Vision 2030. We also did, especially in the competitive marketplace, we focused on enhancing our talent acquisition efforts across the enterprise. And that's where, this year, we're working on it with the hiring intelligence to take it to the new level. One thing we did different over the past year is we brought qualitative surveys to our hiring managers and our new employees to capture their experiences in the hiring process to join the organization. So we wanted to make sure that the experience is aligning with, you know, the experience we want to provide to attract the talent of the future. And in regards to knowledge management and content management, we've, we launched a knowledge transfer program, which is really, which identifies subject matter experts that have unique knowledge across the enterprise, and then we conduct surveys across their peers in the enterprise to understand what's the information they want to learn most from these people, from the subject matter experts. And then we conducted social learning programs, and we also created a new role of a knowledge partner I'm going to talk about on the next slide. Next slide, Carly. So the first project here, this is talking about, this is our college career, excuse me, college, career pathing framework project. This is a game-changing project for the enterprise, and this gets me really excited to talk about. Well, what this, this project has been underway for a number of months now, and it's still going to take a while to accomplish. But what this is, this is going to empower employees to have transparency in their career development. They're going to be able to look at career opportunities both horizontally, vertically, and diagonally across the enterprise. When this project is completed, employees are going to be able to see what positions are in their orbit and what are the skills and competencies they need to be able to move into that direction of their career. The way we envision it with the tool, we currently have an RFP for a tool. When an employee starts on day one, they would be able to go in the tool and see opportunities that they could build their skills towards, and what are the experiences and development opportunities they need to do to get there. And this is informing a lot of our talent curriculum and our custom programs. And again, it solves a big challenge with DEI in providing all employees transparency into their career development. And the company wins from this because it allows us to tap into the great talent base we have and encourage our employees to consider NIPA for future opportunities and Canals rather than going outside the organization. The other big initiative this year is around people management process evolution. We have performance reviews, we have succession planning, but we're always evaluating where we currently are today. What do our managers and employees need to be successful tomorrow? And what are industry trends, and how are we going to stay competitive? Succession planning, we've made tweaks to DEI. Nancy mentioned, we are, we've incorporated it into our performance management process this year, so everyone will be measured on it. We're also creating a bias challenger role into the recruiting process, so we get broader perspectives when making decisions on people we select to join the organization. And the final one here is values. Culture is very important. And when we did the values work a year ago and announced the values, it was really capturing what was already in the organization. We surveyed over, we conducted engagements and surveys with over 700 employees, and we really want to bring those values to life because those are really, those are what's going to be what gets us to 2030 and beyond. And it's our DNA of really who we are. They're not just words on a page. They're actually how we want to be, how we want everyone to engage with each other. So this year, we've built custom programs of it. We're calling it Words and Actions. It empowers our leadership leaders with tools to engage their employees on their day-to-day work and connect the dots to our Vision 2030. So any employee, if it can, I want to say if it's successful, but when it's successful, any employee, regardless of what their daily job is, can understand how they're impacting Vision 2030 and the future of the organization. And our final one, 2022 Eureka Innovation Challenge, you may remember it from a few years ago. We have finalists right now who are doing pitch videos, and we will be making sure you all get to see them. While that is an innovation challenge, that's, that program, that initiative is really about hearing our employees' idea. We know we have great resources with our employees all across NIPA and Canals. And that competition, while it is an innovation competition, it's about getting their ideas heard, and they have great ideas that can enhance our programs and initiatives across the enterprise. So we're really excited for all that work. Next slide, Carly. Of knowledge management is equally important. Everything everybody's presenting on is equally important. Our goal this year is we're focused on fostering a knowledge-sharing culture. It's one thing to capture knowledge or identify an individual that has unique information, but we want to change it from, from a thing we do to the way we work. So knowledge gets captured with how we work on our day-to-day basis. Our knowledge transfer program, I had mentioned previously, is a custom program we built to identify SMEs and exactly what information is really usable and applicable to the entire enterprise. The knowledge partner role is a newly created role where we pair someone with a subject matter expert, and it turns it into a development opportunity. So not only do they get to shadow the person, they'll get exposure across other leaders and projects across the organization that SME has exposure to, and it, it starts to become a development tool and program we can engage our employees. So not only are we capturing knowledge, but we're building our talent base and building future leaders while we do it. So we have that bottom, multiple bottom line. And we're also bringing that information into the succession planning process. So we're always looking at it from multi variables and how we can move the organization and enhance NIPA's resiliency. Knowledge content management is a daunting project. We work closely with communications and IT as we transition to the SharePoint Cloud. We're really focusing on organize our content across the entire enterprise, which will enhance its findability. We do have, we just finished an RFP for an enterprise content management solution, which will allow our, you know, information, where our information is stored, to talk to different systems and ultimately get people, capture, capture the important information as people are working on it so it can become easily accessible. This, while it is more of a content organization and a software tool, this is fundamental for creating that knowledge-sharing culture in that we're capturing the information in the organization as we work on the day-to-day. That's my high level. Yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Stephen, I, from my, my own personal work experience, I'm aware of a phenomenon where employees, very talented, and has the skill set to rise to a higher level, and the opportunity presents itself, and they say, I don't want to do that because, for example, I might be a union employee, and there's a supervisor or a leader's job that is available. They're probably the best person qualified for the job, and they say, I don't want the responsibility. How do you overcome that in getting your best people into your critical spot?
That, you know, that's a great question, and it is a challenge, and it happens in a variety of different roles. What, the way we look at it is, we embrace people in those roles. At the end of the day, if someone doesn't, if they're successful in their role and they don't want to move into another role, we will embrace that. And part of our job architecture program for Career Path, I don't want to go into all the details, we've focused on the ability to create these higher career verticals where people don't necessarily become a people manager. So the resource then, in those situations, is it's about the talent pipeline. So we encourage managers and leaders to have ongoing conversations with their employees to, under, through our mid-year process or our performance review process, to get a sense of where they want to go and support them where they want to go. And it is okay if you do have someone who's high-performing, who is happy in their role, because that, that's actually an asset in a lot, a lot of roles. So we embrace it, you know, we don't try to force anything, but we should, we want to provide managers the tools so they can have those conversations, put development plans in place, and ensure those employees stay equally engaged. We don't want them to feel they're passed over, or they're not going to get other opportunities. So we just embrace it, and, you know, we holistically try to view, how can everyone bring their, we have a mindfulness initiative, and one of our philosophies is let everyone bring their whole selves to work every day and embrace them for what they bring to the table and encourage them to be, to thrive by being who they are. So we just work with the reality in those situations.
And hopefully, with successful execution on the work that you're doing, you're building a bench. So that even if this person says no, you've got someone else who's just, who's also qualified to go on that, that leadership role, so.
That's, that's the goal. We see it as a, we look at it through the lens of a talent ecosystem. Everything's interconnected, and all the programs we do enhances those connections. So that's full of really resiliency. We'd want the organization to be able to move dynamically to the challenges of the industry.
Any other questions first?
Great, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Good morning, Board of Trustees. Justin, leadership team, and NIPA colleagues. My name is Shirley Marine. I'm VP of Enterprise Share Services, and I'm here to provide an update on Tactics C: Process Excellence. Next slide, please. So our strategy for increasing efficiencies is to really target these three areas. The first one is to really build those capabilities by introducing tools, methodologies, and common language through different levels of certifications. Next, we coach our employees by applying what they, to help them apply what they have learned. And the last focus is to have, have my team of leaders of process excellence experts work with the groups to make sure that they are optimizing end-to-end and so that our processes are optimized. And we're also looking at automation along the way to effectively speed up workflows. Next slide, please. Twenty, just to, 2021 accomplishments, 2021 was a good year. We certified approximately 500 yellow belts. We had over 600 touchpoints and opportunities to work with our employees on application on these tools with workshops and easy implementation into their day-to-day work. And I'm happy to say that adoption continues to, to increase. We actually completed 10 major complex process improvement projects that resulted in a savings and benefits of 4.7 million in several improvement categories that included revenue generation, capacity, and cost savings. We now have a centralized process mapping platform to digitize our processes and to allow for that connectivity and transparency. We also implemented several digital solutions to help with acceleration and ease. Next slide, please. With the major complex projects that we worked on, the outcome hit several benefit categories. As you can see here, we had a customer-facing project that facilitated revenue generation, but the bulk of our projects was in capacity savings. And the, really, the work that we did in capacity savings is where our improvement created savings from less time spent on non-value tasks and having, or having poor documentation or no documentation, which actually leads to loss of productivity. With one of the projects we had, we actually hit three of the categories. So we had a cost avoidance, a cost savings, and a risk reduction in that one project. Next slide, please. So for 2022, our highlights year-to-date, we, we now have an enterprise-wide database so that we're able to analyze, prioritize, and really track our process improvement opportunities as well as really identify what we, what we should be focused on. All activities will feed into a dashboard at the org level and at the business unit level. We are continuing our yellow belt certifications, and we just rolled out our green belt certification to further enhance process improvement understanding. And with this understanding, they'll actually have their own projects, which will also contribute to additional benefits. Next slide, Carly. We are working on several new complex projects this year and have partnered with leaders to ensure we are focused on the areas that provide the most value. We will also be using a risk framework, which compares the, the risk of failure before and after an improvement has implemented and helps identify the most important areas for process improvement. In this example, that our process improvement action reduced a risk priority number of 170 before improvement, down to 40 after improvement. Next slide.
So I'm sorry, Shirley, I don't really understand what I'm seeing on this. Can you give me an example of an application of this? I see the number, you reduced it from 170 to 40. What does that mean? Like, what's the action that was done that?
So in this particular example, we hit actually four different benefits. But in general, for going forward for all of our projects, we're going to be looking at, there's a formula that we use, and it's really a, it's a framework. It's failure modes and effect analysis. And what it does is, it scores the severity, the occurrence, and the detection. And there's a score, you know, one out of 10. And so you, you score the severity of the process.
And any process?
Any process, yes. We can, we can do that, and then we'll know which ones. And then we'll know which ones are at high risk and those are the ones we want to focus on. And so then we work on improving it. In this particular example, we actually free, you know, we streamline processes. This one actually hit four different departments. It was the benefits department, the accounts payable department and the insurance and business controls. So the actions that we did actually that 40 and that new improve was actually an average of the four because we took them all. So, but going forward, we're going to actually apply this framework to all of our projects. Okay, and the next slide, please. So we'll continue to build out our digital maps for over, sorry, hold on a second. Well, to continue to, to build out our digital mass with over 200 maps year to date and several users are adding it every day. So this will allow for our process map to be linked according to the hierarchy and according to the function. We will be able to view gaps and create several charts to capture overall process completeness and effectiveness. And in our own work to reduce cycle time on all of our projects, we are leading kaizans. So a kaizen event is conducted over several days, bringing the right team members together and is designed to achieve breakthroughs that quickly lead to process improvements. So the more we do these events with our employees, the better the employees will become at doing these. And it's just an easier way for a process improvement. And the, the goal is for them to do these on their own and so that we're all adding to continuous improvement. So every little bit incrementally will add to an improvement and move the process excellence needle. Any other questions?
Shirley, I've dealt with the legal process and judicial process. That's putting in place processes so that you avoid surprises and things that you haven't planned for. So that if something comes up in the middle of a project or something like that, if you have processes in place, you have a, a plan in place that can deal with that process, that problem, whatever it is. This is what you're talking about here across the whole enterprise. Putting processes in place and having the employees familiar enough with the process so that if anything comes up, they're trained and prepared to deal with the problem. That's what this is all about.
Exactly, proactively, really looking to ensure that our processes are evolving, they're, they're up to date. Oftentimes when we meet with employees, they'll say, you know, we ask, why do you do things this way? And they say, because it's always been done this way. So we're trying to change the mindset so that we can empower employees to say, is there a better way to do this, right? Without, you know, really removing the governance that, that applies and why we have a process. So, but allowing for employees to say, is there, are there pain points? Should we look at this? How can we streamline this? Especially now as we start to look at new technologies, new modeling for services or products to be able to look at our processes and whether model what we can do against new products. So it's having that ability to look at what is our process? How can it be efficient? What's, you know, is it, is it, is it take too long? How can we reduce that cycle time? Is it, you know, 45 days to do something? Can we reduce it to 30? So we're looking at really creating those efficiencies end to end. And now with this tool that we have, which you'll see, you know, we are able to look at it from a higher hierarchy, a business level. So now it's not only, we're looking at a process map, one process map. We're looking at it holistically across the organization. So we can see when it goes from one group to another and we can see that connection, which is a really great tool to have.
Or any slippage between one group and another as they try to coordinate work that they're doing. Okay, great.
Great.
Any other questions for Shirley?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, now I'll invite Kerry Jane King, Director of Sustainability, to present her report. There you are.
I was going to say, just checking it still, good morning, good morning, yeah, it's just you and NIPA colleagues. I'm going today to provide a very brief overview of our 2020 Sustainability Report. This report captures ESG progress across the year and highlights key milestones in our effort to address climate change. Next slide, please. So the, the report follows very much the format of our 2020 report. It addresses the 15 ESG material areas that NIPA identified in 2020. It also aligns with leading ESG standards, Global Reporting Initiative, the Sustainable Accounting Standards Board, Electric Utility Standard and the Task Force on Climate Related Financial Disclosures. The report is divided into three sections. Next slide, please. So our planet describes expansion of our transmission and how we are bringing clean power to high load areas, modernization of our generation, hydro generation assets to ensure a clean baseload supply, decarbon strategies that we're exploring to, to decarbonize our natural gas plants in Southeast New York and as well as how we're assessing physical climate impact impacts to increase climate resilience. It also looks at other ways that we are reducing our carbon footprint through energy efficiency and electrification of our buildings and vehicle fleet, as well as how we're prioritizing natural carbon storage on our lands. Next slide, please. Community really provides an overview of the programs that we provide to customers to help reduce greenhouse gas emissions with clean technologies like electric, electrification of bus infrastructure. We've been working with various cities and some very, very exciting programs there. Last year we did progress more this year. And I just want to say that the progress here has been amazing. And you know, in this meeting, I think, you know, you've seen progress across all the areas I'm talking about. So looking back here is a little like, really, you know, we, we know about this. But this is basically to give you a sense of, of the scope of the, of the report and how we try to describe our performance. Another example, of course, is solar, distributed solar. And again, our, our project with White Plains. We, we also described the programs we provide to help support local economies like our low cost power and other efforts like the, the New York Energy Zone, the new, which is a great new resource for local communities. Our canals program to, with ecotourism to increase resilience. And of course, our large network of local suppliers. Next slide, please. And, and they've heard a lot today about the amazing work being done in this area. We, to, to illustrate, you know, our progress with diversity, equity and inclusion, we highlight the, the pathways program, of course, and our PTEC program. But we also describe our robust health and safety program and, and also the efforts we're making to support employee well-being, mental well-being. Our last slide is, yeah, so these are just, you know, highlights by the numbers. I think a lot of this has been kept mentioned today, but the 80%, 88% of electricity generated with, with hydropower. We invested 207 million in transmission. We, and 61 million in, in modernization of our hydro assets, of course. 87 million in MWP. And we did plant 1,000 trees with our customers on a, on a, you know, tree power program, a one to one match, which I'm continuing to expand that program across the years. And also, I would say, you know, what noting is our employee training program and climate science, which is kind of a unique program. And we, we provided training to all 2,500 employees. So that's it. I just wanted to be brief.
Great, you know, and I think it's important to keep, to gather all of this information. And I'm sure our rating agencies, you know, appreciate being able to see all of this in one place. It just, and we conserve as a model of how, you know, we incorporate this throughout everything we do and how all of it connects. So I do think it's important to have it in place.
Any other questions for Kerry Jane? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now move into our committee reports. And first up to bat is the cyber and physical, physical security committee report from Michael Balboni from the meeting earlier this morning.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. The, the cyber and physical security committee met today and adopted, first off, we adopted the meetings of the January 22nd meeting. We received staff reports from NIPA's cybersecurity posture and the 2022 plans, including an updated of the improvements to our vulnerability management program, as well as the Cyber Collective Defense Consortium. That is really important, given the fact that the governor has announced a joint security operations center for municipalities. We have in fact modeled that ahead of time and created a great program that is becoming very important as they build out the Joint Security Operations Center. And the, the goal here is to provide a collective defense. Now, the committee also received an update from NIPA's readiness efforts in response to workplace violence and other active shooter scenarios, which unfortunately has become a reality more today in the US than before. And always looking to upgrade the security elements of our facilities, we actually saw, had a visual illustration of one of the security upgrades that in Eve Noel's presentation, there was a picture of bulletproof glass being installed in the control centers. And that is a part of the ongoing physical improvements that they're trying to do to secure our facilities. The last note is, you know, cybersecurity and then ever evolving and changing environment is not a destination, it's journey. And I'm proud to say that NIPA team continues to work every day to improve our status.
Great, thank you. No votes are necessary. Next is our last and final audit committee report from.
Yes, it is. The audit committee met on Thursday, July 14th and adopted the minutes from March 20, March 18th committee meeting. We received one staff report and adopted the following two items and approved one request for audit and non-audit advisory services provided by KPMG, which are now before the trustees for approval. That service contract is for $5 million, a total amount, not to exceed 10 million, two. Committee made a motion to recommend the full board approval for the contract and I would so move.
Well, we'll just do them all together if you want.
Second one is the approval and adoption of the New York Power Authority and Canal Corporation Audit Committee Charter that was provided for. And the final is approval and adoption of the New York Power Authority Internal Audit Charter. And ask for a motion to approve these three.
Moved, moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Judge McCandry.
Nice job.
You now, Dennis. You got to follow that. Exactly. So I'll give my report from the finance committee. The Finance and Risk Committee met on July 14th. We adopted the minutes, received three staff reports and adopted the following seven items that I will submit before the full board of trustees for adoption. We recommend approval of a five-year construction contract for substation construction for Smart Path Connect to Mitchell's Power, Inc. of Nina, Wisconsin, and the amount of 104, 104.7 million dollars. Recommend the approval of a 14-year non-personal services contract in the amount of 26.7 million to RMS Energy of Randall, Minnesota for the next gen Niagara program, which is the mechanical and electrical upgrades project, isolated phase bus replacement. Recommend approval of a capital expenditure in the amount of 44.8 million and the award of a five-year equipment contract in the amount approximately of 38 million to Real COH, Inc. of Boss Brian, Quebec for the next gen Niagara project. This is the 630T gantry crane replacement program. We recommend the approval of two value contracts in the aggregate amount of $70 million to Medea America Corp. or of Parsippany, New Jersey, and TRO, Inc. of San Francisco, California for engineering, design, testing, furnishing and delivering cold climate package window heat pump units for a term of seven years. In addition, approval is requested to waive the requirements of agreement article 22 steel components. We recommend, there's a guideline that all the trustees were presented, the new guidelines that define steel products. And so we're recommending approval of those new guidelines that will guide us going forward. We also recommend that approval of the electric transportation program consulting value contracts to expanded, to be expanded from the current 9.5 million in aggregate funding to a total of 20 million due to expanded interest in the program from transit agencies and other large fleet customers. Recommend that the trustees approve the waiver of the requirement of the authority's agreement article 22 steel components for the procurement of four runner ban drain valves for the Blenheim-Gilboa Power Project. This requested waiver is required to ward and furnish and deliver contract to Graycon LLC. I'll now ask for a motion to adopt these items.
Somewhat.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Thank you. That was a long list. I will now close out the meeting. The next meeting of the NIPA and Canal Joint Meeting will be held on Thursday, September 29th, 2022. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you. Any last words?
No, I'm sure I'll miss all of you, but that's to be expected.